Good evening, welcome to City Lowell's Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on May 14, 2018. Housekeeping issues, if you have a cellphone on, please place it on vibrate or turn it off so it doesn't interfere with the public meeting. Secondly, if you wish to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition, please state your name and sign in at the podium. Tonight, our alternative member, Philip Gemano, will be the voting member on record. Moving forward, we have no continued business, we'll go directly into new business. ZB 2018-12 for a special permit, Fernando Borba at 15 Staveley Street, Section 4.5.3. The applicant is seeking special permit approval for a property at 15 Staveley Street located in traditional single-family zoning district. The applicant proposes to remove a non-conforming detached garage and construct an attached garage in the primary dwelling and seeks a special permit under Section 4.5.3, non-conforming structure, and any other relief required of the zoning Lowell ordinance. There's a petition here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Do we have to use this?
Yes, good evening.
All right, I don't want to be screaming at you. An old Irish loud voice resonates in almost every building I go to, but again, good evening. My name is Jim Curran, I'm a land planning consultant with a home office in the City of Lawrence, and I'm here with Fernando Borba and help him go through this special permit process. Just for the board's edification, I don't often come to Lowell, I love the building, I love the aesthetics of the place, but I'm currently doing three other jobs for the family in the City of Lawrence. And when Fernando asked me if I could help him on his garage, I was more than happy to do it because we've been working together on these other projects in Lawrence for a little over a year and a half, so... And not being of this business, I felt compelled to help him on it. And again, Mr. Chairman, as you stated, we're seeking a special permit under Section 4.3, non-conforming use. And I think it's our experience to recite to the board why you could and if you should grant him this special permit. He purchased the property, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in 1990. The application we presented to you on his behalf shows several plans, one going back to 1880, which when this property was first subdivided, showing eight lots, I believe, and it was on what they call Lee Street. Since then, Lee Street has been changed to Staveley Street and has been extended to a through street. The property he owns is 100 feet easterly of Bill Ricker Street, has 60 feet of frontage, 466 square foot, square feet, and existing residents have been on there since pre-1950s. His intention is to remove the garage, and I'm sure if you had occasion to go buy the property, or if you reviewed the application, you can see the pictures, that it's been worn out. He is in a position now financially to do something better. The kids are all out of college, he's got an accessible business in the City of Lawrence in the liquor business, and he wants to do something to make the property more enhancing and more convenient for himself and not being selfish about it, but we all like to have our cars on the garage that's appropriate for... With a 10-foot by 20-foot, we all know that you can't barely even open the doors of the car to get in and out of it unless they have anything else in it. In reviewing the application, specific to a special permit, there were six conditions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that had to be satisfied in conversation as to why you might suggest or give him an opportunity to do it. And we try to answer them in a brief as possible situation. And if I may be read them through, Mr. Chairman, without taking up too much of your time...
Certainly.
Of the six, they... No social, economic, and community needs are required for this proposal. While he's financially able to do it, there's no social impact, this is just a single-family home with him and his... What do you got, two homes now? Who's home, your two girls?
Me and my girls.
Yes, him and his two girls are home, graduates from local colleges. And it's the community, I'm sure, again, it'd be redundant, if you go out and look at the street, there's been some upgrading over the last 10, 12 years, which if he continues in that process, it's going to be an enhancement to that little community that they have over there along the river. And I think with that kind of a feeling and that kind of impetus by him and investing that money in it, we're going to get those other houses along that street to take heed and try to make theirs a little better also. If I could just jump, if it is go... If this does go through, the investment for this garage is somewhere in the vicinity of $60,000. It's 600 square feet times $60 a square foot, plus or minus, depends who the contractor is. But that's a substantial investment, which would be enhancing to the neighborhood. We always use that word, that no adverse effect to change of traffic flow or safety resulting from this proposal. The driveway is going to remain at the same disposition that it has now. It's approximately 12 feet wide, not going to change, going to be the same. They have currently two cars, on occasion, well, they have two cars and a truck. And when the kids are around in school, there's one car and a truck. So we're not really over-parking this, this isn't turning out to be a market basket parking lot. And with the possibility of putting the two cars in, that on any given day, probably nobody out that driveway at all. The... I think the most important safety result of this is that we're not changing the way in and out of the property. It's going to remain the same, going over that same disposition. And the three, no utilities other than those on the side of public use service are needed. We're just going to extend from the house. And if I may just get ahead of myself a little bit, if you reviewed the plans, the garage is coming down, we're going to attach the garage to the house. The house will now have its own entrance to the garage, to the rear portion of the house. And that'll be a much better situation for Fernando and his family. The proposal will emulate the Staveley Street covered update, and I believe I suggested something that in the beginning, because the immediate abotters have made a substantial improvement. The house to his left was put up around 19... 2013, and the people on the right put that new garage up around 2010. That one to the left, again, was a vacant lot. The man purchased it and put that beautiful house up. So, I mean, he's kind of like the catalyst, he's the guy that started putting some real bucks into that neighborhood. And I mean, it was designed in 1881, so we've got some real, real tie-in homes out there. The garage, no detrimental impact in that natural environment. I mean, that's a lot of words, but I think what we're trying to say to you is that by him building this garage, it's not going to influence change, impede anything from the abotters. If you looked at the assessors' maps that I gave in the packet, there's really nobody directly behind him. There's a house that's on Bill Ricker Street, two-family greenhouse that have a little deck on the second floor, which is probably about 20 feet up in the air, which still have whatever they're looking at now, even after we do get permission to put the garage up. So, we're not impacting him at all. No adverse potential fiscal impact to include city services, tax base, and employment. The... If it's any... Our contractor, who we use in our jobs in Lawrence, will also be building this. He's from Drakehead, but it's not Lowell. He's going to be putting $60,000 more into the assessed value of his house, and we're requiring no more services other than what we have now. I think oftentimes, when I prepare these and talk about it before boards like yourself, Mr. Chairman, there's always some concept of something beyond the pale. This is only going to be a garage. The purpose of connecting it to the house will now afford him an opportunity to go into the house through a new rear exit. They currently have a sliding glass door midway through the house. Energy efficient, not at all. Hard to get into during the winter. None of us use our front door, so they've been struggling with this forever. Now that we have the means to be able to do it, they can go in through the garage, go in the back door, have environmental protection for themselves, help the energy efficiency for everything else, and I think that's a benefit to not only the community, but also to Fernando. I had a local architect friend of mine prepare plans for you, showing with the intent of the development of the parking garage. We try to keep it in harmony, parking garages or garages on any houses aren't all that attractive, but we try to simulate some of the ones in the area. We put windows in the back, and we put shades on the side. Those two on the side are just emulating windows, there'll be a shutter, fire code rating, but it just gives it more enhancing than having just a blank wall. In the front, as you looked at them, we did the best we could. We're going to match the color of the house with the garage and all the rest of it's pretty conventional, eight-foot door, 12-foot door, three-foot door entrance. And I think that's pretty much it, Mr. Chairman. Fernando is here, and if you want to ask him any questions, great guy, great family, and if you have questions, any member of the board, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you for your time and attention to this.
Thank you. Just want to make sure, are you in receipt of the comments from the city?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did you go through those and see anything that you may not agree with or you may want to speak to?
No, none whatsoever, right. I think that's a compliment to the planning board. I think that's what these ordinances are all about, and we find nothing to be argumentative about.
Okay, great. Fair enough, I just wanted to make sure you did receive a copy of it and...
Yeah, no, he was...
...the requirement.
And he also called me, Patrick did, and I got to compliment him for his help for us to get through this Lowellism. They're all the same, but they're not the same.
Yeah, well, we're lucky, we have a very well-organized, youthful Department of City Planning, they're on top of their game.
And I compliment him on that.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, I'd like to open it up to the public, anybody wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Van?
To you, Mr. Chairman. You know, that's a very well-put-together presentation, the package is very detailed. I know I appreciate it, and I'm sure my members also appreciate it. To me, I think this garage, this special permit, it makes sense. As you said, it adds investment to the property, and it's a very nice property, so I think it only adds to that whole neighborhood. So, I'm in support of this and wish you guys the best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yeah, good evening, Jim. I actually look at the property, the one next to you, it's really nice. The other one on your right is also good, so I guess to enhance it, it's a good thing for the city. So, I'm really in favor of it. I wish you all the best.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
I think you've more than satisfactorily addressed all of the six factors that have been laid out for us in making our decision. I would wholeheartedly support it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
To you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with my fellow board members here that it's a well-presented package here, and I appreciate the level of detail on the garage itself, with the transom windows over the garage doors and the windows on the rear and the almost windows on the side, so nicely done. Patrick, you had a comment on the site plan, and I think that... I just want to understand if it's possible to do the 300 feet, because we really don't have on the site plan that was presented. I think it's a sheet. I don't know if there's a sheet number on it. It's the site plan that shows a dotted line to where you might widen the driveway and then shows the footprint of the garage, but you don't indicate where you meet the 300-foot green space requirement on that site plan. And I know that it's going to start to get a little tight there, and so I just want to make sure that we get that on the site plan. So I was wondering if we could make that a condition to add that, to make sure that you don't extend the driveway into the space that's required for that green space.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Patrick had brought that to my attention in the very beginning, and I was remiss in not showing that as a dimensional disposition, but I calculated all the open... allowable open green space, which would be lawn, and it comes out to be 1,390 square feet.
Is that, Patrick, within the setbacks? Is the green space measured? I seem to remember the setbacks have something to do with that measurement, right?
So, single families actually don't have that setback requirement?
Okay.
When it's more than a single family, it then has the setback for calculating usable open space?
Okay, so what's being presented here is accurate, then, that we probably have well in excess of 300 square feet?
Right.
All right. The other thing that I don't see on the site plan is a dimensional characteristic for the width of the new driveway and the limits of it. So it really is just a dotted line, we don't really indicate a dimension characteristic there for what you plan to build. It looks like you're maintaining the same curb cut of 12 feet, is that correct?
That's exactly right.
I think it's partly because of the brick work that's out front, you don't want to make that 15 feet. I don't mean to be difficult here, but I just would like to not see the whole yard paved, right? And so I'd just like to see a characteristic on the site plan that indicates the width of the new driveway and the area that is going to be designated as the 300-square-foot green space, if that's possible. Okay, I'd like to make that a condition with my fellow board members. Just because we don't want to get into a situation where your driveway becomes the whole area.
We should have been more articulate at that, perhaps. I apologize for that.
No, no, nope. Other than that, nice set of plans, thank you very much. And I agree, I think this is a nice addition to the neighborhood by far, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of quick questions. First of all, so Patrick, as far as the rear setback is concerned, we're... We need five feet, and they're looking at four feet in the new plans, is that what this is?
Well, so a... It's a little confusing, my comments, and I apologize, but a detached garage would be five feet from your side and rear, but what they're proposing, because it's already a non-conforming structure, they're proposing under Section 4.5.3 is to convert it from a non-conforming structure to another non-conforming structure. That's a special permit that you're reviewing, and basically you're deciding if it's more non-conforming than the existing.
Than what's already there?
Right.
So...
So the setbacks themselves aren't necessarily... Like, they're not getting variance?
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was a little confused by that, trying to figure it out, because my concern was, I mean, if you're five... If you're four feet from the side, I can understand the side setback, but from the rear setback, four to five feet, I mean, you're one foot, you're... We're going to see if that would make much of a difference if you'd push that back, but if that's not the case, that's not really the case here, because we're going from one non-conforming structure to another, then I guess I wouldn't have any real issue with that at this point. One other thing that came up, though, was I think you mentioned that the height of the garage, it was 20... It was scheduled to be 20 feet, and now it's 16?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Callahan. I, again, not being totally familiar with the ordinance, we... The architect and I had a conversation quickly after Patrick brought it to my attention, and we brought the building down to 16 feet.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't really clear from the plans as to the height of the structure itself, as far as I can see, but if that's the case, I mean, I would condition it on revising the architectural plans to demonstrate that it's now 16.
I don't think there's any identification specific to the height of the building, only in my descriptive dissertation.
Yeah.
In the architectural renderings, they use a lot of permissives, if I could use that word. And in the finalization of this, he realizes what his complement is, what the guidelines of this board may illustrate to him. But we know that the mean of the height of this could be no higher than 16 feet from the ground surface, and we understand that.
Okay. And the two garage doors, they look... I mean, one, I can see one is noted as 12 by 10, but the other one isn't really identified. I mean, are there going to be... Is there going to be one garage door or two garage doors?
Oh, there's two garage doors as shown on the architectural plan. One will be 12 feet in width, and one will be eight feet in width.
Okay. Great. All right, I'm just kind of curious about that, I mean, it's not... I don't think that that's going to be much of an... I don't see that as being much of an issue, so... Otherwise, I would... Yeah, I would second Dennis's concerns about the open space, that we would probably should condition that, designate that... I meant the site plan to designate the usable open green spaces, is that what the condition... And, but, other than that, it does seem to fit in with the... Some of the other nature of the garages in the area, and I have no concerns about that, it's very well put together, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean. Patrick, do you have a comment or concern?
No, I just wanted to make a comment about the height, and I'll leave it for the board to decide. I originally had said that the height restriction was 16 feet, which is true unless a garage has not more than one story of habitable space, in which case it can be no larger than... Or it can essentially match the roof pitch of the existing... of the dwelling structure. So in this case, a 20-foot structure is perhaps possible, because I don't think... I think the house is much taller than that, but I will let the board to decide if what they feel is appropriate.
Okay, thanks. No, that actually makes a lot more sense now, not including the... Because just, there wasn't... There was no real height renderings on the architectural plan, so it was kind of difficult to understand where we're going, but, okay, that makes more sense, so, thanks.
Thank you. So essentially, Patrick, we could place a condition on this that it's... Could not be higher than 20 feet?
Higher? No.
You could, I mean, or you could... I mean, if you didn't say anything, they'd still have to meet the requirement of the zoning code.
They'd have to meet the requirement of the building apartment, so...
And I can... I mean, if it's helpful for the board, I can read the section that...
No, I...
...is the language about it.
I've read it, I just want to... I just want to make sure, because we didn't have the height renderings, and I just want to make sure the petition is aware that that square footage is implied. Dennis?
When we're talking about height, we're also measuring to the midpoint of the sloping roof.
Right.
And I think that the existing house, at best, is, you know, in the 16 range at that midpoint, because I think that eve is probably close to 12, and at the ridge, we're probably at, you know, the 20. So I think 16 makes a lot of sense, because by 16, I think we're basically matching the height of the existing house, which is already the zoning requirement, is the max you can go, so...
Right.
Okay.
So then, obviously, then a condition that it be 16 feet is appropriate.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, Mr. Curran, you've heard the concerns and the comments of the board. I do want to thank you for your very well-prepared plan and organized, gave us the opportunity to come in here and be prepared, and helping out your friend here is a great thing. We do have a couple of conditions. You have read the comments and we've gone through there. Height of the... Well, 16 feet, I would put this... I would get this...
Okay.
Yeah, I would get this. Informally, the clerk will read back to you the conditions, and if you're agreeable, we'll move to a vote.
Okay, so the conditions are to amend the site plan to designate the usable open green space, and the height of the garage is not to exceed the height of the dwelling unit or 16 feet, whichever is less, whichever is more. Whichever is more, right? Oh, wow. What was the width of the drive?
For the site plan to indicate the width of the extended driveway.
And the site plan to indicate the width of the extended driveway.
And for my own edification, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, do we re-present the plan, or does the plan get approved subject to the conditions?
The plan will be approved subject to the conditions. Sorry about that. The plan will be approved subject to conditions, and then, once you're completed, we just maintain that the conditions were kept.
And is there a time parameter that we get this back? Can we get it back within a week and be ready for your next meeting? Is that how you do it?
So it won't have to go back to a board at the time that you file a building permit?
Will it have to go back to the board?
No, you just have to meet those conditions that were...
Just bring it to you.
Right.
All right.
As long as those, your plans meet the conditions.
That's as easy as... I commend the board, I've been doing this for 50 years.
Once the conditions are set, you're obligated, you're in agreeance to just to abide by those, notify DPD, and then we move forward, and your client is able to get his daughter's cars in the garage, which is always...
Well, you get a junkie truck. But I get it, 50 years of doing this, I've gone to these meetings and no agenda. And then light of the fact that you have only one thing on this tonight, God love you. A lot of people wouldn't show up, and again, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
One quick question, sir. Sir, we're not...
You have one more question?
One question. Patrick, there was one comment about extending the driveway requiring an engineer's permit. We don't need to condition that, correct? Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we are in agreeance with the conditions noted by the clerk. Any other comments, concerns, or conditions by any other board members? Not being said, we have a...
Motion. A motion. To you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-12 on 15 Staveley Street for a special permit under Section 4.5.3 to construct and attach garage to the primary dwelling with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
A roll call, please.
Chairman, parrot.
Approve with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina?
Approve with conditions.
So, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck, and we thank you for upgrading your property, and best of luck over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Take care. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks again, Patrick.
Thank you.
Moving forward on to other business, we have minutes for approval for April 23, 2018. All members have reviewed the minutes. Any comments, concerns, or edits? May I have a motion for an acceptance of the minutes?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for April 23, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
A roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Accept minutes for April 23, 2018.
Member Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve the minutes.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the minutes.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approve, approve the minutes.
Thank you. Are there any other business comments or concerns by the board or the DPD?
Nope. Just two items next, next meeting. One of them's a continued item from 44 Merrimack Street, and then another one is a new two-family, looking for some dimensional relief.
And as a point of notice and clarification, our next meeting will be on a Thursday.
Yes.
Is that correct due to the holiday?
Yes.
Please check your calendars and plan accordingly. It'll be Thursday, the 24th.
The 31st.
31st. Strike that. I apologize. 31st. I'm a little, I guess I'm a little anxious to get to Memorial Day. So, the meeting, our next meeting will be on the 31st. It'll be a Thursday evening, and there'll be no notice of that. Any other comments or concerns of member of the board? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second motion.
Meeting's adjourned. Have a good night.